Good morning.
All right.
Today is February 15th, 2019. It's nine o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Please rise and flex, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Item three, any citizens desire to be heard. Hearing that, move on to item four. Consideration possible action to approve minutes of February 4th, 2019.
How moved we are for the minutes.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, motion passes, you can have a seat. Item five, consideration possible action to approve final plat of Timney Hill in southwest quarter of range 2415 north and two west.
All the language on there.
Let's see. Private streets. Private, private. Where does that run off of?
It's right next to the, um, as well.
Oh. Wow.
It's open in your area, you mind?
I guess so. I haven't seen it. I have no clue.
I don't need to make one more.
So you're gonna access Douglas?
I know. Just get it down.
Yeah. How's that gonna come out because it's kinda landlocked back there?
Well, it's not the property.
Sorry. Oh, this is...
Here's a copy of the plat, Mike. You can look at it.
They're out here.
I'd like to figure out where's that.
Yeah, so it's off of Douglas.
All that?
Yeah.
What did it go? I don't know. They got a 11-ton bridge between them and Seward. And so I'm kinda wondering how. Well, they won't pay for it though.
You pay for it. Your job.
Yeah, they're cheap. It's a 11-ton bridge?
It's only two, it's only two million dollars.
We're bringing the bridge to yours.
So I need to beef it up so they can make money off of that piece of property.
Hey, you can bring us some rest of the county, man.
Yeah, we don't need that Seward money anyway. It's just too many dollars.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, you need to go pay property taxes in Logan County.
There you go. And the schools love it. The schools love it, nothing nobody else does. I don't know what they're gonna do for a road.
What do you mean for a road? Tax us?
It's a cattle trail.
Yeah, well, okay. All right, well signed. What do you think?
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, it's totally private. Okay. Call in some rebel. Hopefully they don't go across that 11-ton bridge with heavy trucks.
I will pass this information along for sure.
Yeah, I already told Seth. He called.
Do you, um, set?
Well, I said it. How can you miss it?
You like how I had three lines here?
Yes, you did a very good job on that.
Thank you very much. Sign that and take it away.
And you go shopping.
Well, good luck. I hope you make money down there.
Yeah, I do too. I mean, I'm all about you guys making money. That's not a problem.
Oh, no. If we made money, we could tell you.
Oh, no, not you.
Now, that bridge gets replaced, we, you don't wanna go across it with construction equipment and whatnot.
Willing or unwilling?
No, they can come up, pine, and cross camp. There's no bridges there.
Okay.
And they could also come from Prager.
Have we voted on this yet?
They could also come from Norwood or off of Prager. So they have two accesses that they can bring trucks in.
I'm gonna run by one more time.
Entertaining motion. Mike made a motion, you seconded.
I did.
Okay. I'll go Ryan.
So will I.
Me too. Motion passes.
We have reservation.
Okay.
No biggie.
All right.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Six.
Makes two additions going in on cattle trails.
Well, you're the one making trouble with cattle trails.
I do.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Item six, and here I feel like anything else. And then collected stepchild on Christmas here with this one. Well, I've been waiting since Christmas throughout. Fewer bids for Lays Place asphalt. This is one of my favorites. This is gonna save me so much trouble, right Troy?
I doubt it. I have no idea. I don't know what's inside these orange envelope shell.
Right. All right. Item six, open sealed bids. Number 2019-12, five month, laid in place, and consideration possible action to awards that bid.
We received three bids. Atlas Paving, Haskell Lemon, TJ Campbell.
What do I got? I got Haskell Lemon.
It's $93 for type A laid in place. Type B would be 97. Type C would be 98. You got two different zone ones. Uh, this is...
Good job.
All from 310 to 510. It's 81, 85, 86. You gonna wanna read all these off?
You gonna be lost in numbers, Troy.
No, I don't think so. I think... That's a lot of them.
Let's just take one and go through it. Can we do that? Yeah, I've got one from Atlas here, and they start off the same way. So our, let's start off with 501 to 750 tons, cause that's kinda where our medium-sized roads are running.
What zone?
Uh, zone one, District one. I've got 81, 83 for Atlas. Still seems high.
I got 86, 94.
What type?
For 550 to 300 tons, District one, zone one. It just doesn't...
He's looking at the 500 to 750.
Oh, the 500. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, 500, okay. Mix A?
Yeah. Type A is 81, 83. B is 85, 54. C is 86, 26.
All right. Haskell Lemons is 74, 30 on A. That's 701, I'll be 501 to 750. And type B is 79, 15. And type C is 79, 40. Haskell's little bid on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, cause that's about what we're gonna, I mean, this 150 to 300 tons is a small job.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a waste of our job.
Right.
Uh, once we get up to around, what does it take? About 600, 800 tons for a mile, depending on the thickness?
I think so. Thickness and width. Yeah.
If you don't mind, let's get down to District three.
Yes, sir.
Let's go back to the 500, 750, 10. District three, zone one. Uh, zone one be sufficient for me.
Okay. One, two. Atlas, I've got, uh, for type A, 91, 26. Type B, 94, 97. Type C, 95, 71.
TJ Campbell would be 81, 82, and 84.
Haskell Lemon is 75, 45, 80, 30. And type C is 80, 55.
Do you wanna look at some on your side, Mike?
Yeah, let's do mine.
Cause it sounds like we might be able to make a decision today.
Right, it does. Okay, zone, zone one, two, and...
District two, zone one. Is that what we're gonna do?
Two, and, two and one, yes.
Okay. Uh, Atlas, I've got 73, 84 for type A. 77, 53 for B, and 81, 89 for type C.
Haskell, or TJ Campbell would be 78 for A. B is 80. C is 81 dollars.
And Haskell Lemons is, for A, is 73, 85. Any more? Right? And type B is 78, 70. And type C is 78, 95. This is seriously close. When we say that B was on Atlas?
Uh, 77, 53.
See, they're just a tad cheaper.
You might, just because it's a different product, you might wanna check your tack oil as well.
Uh, okay. Tackle oil.
We'll dig that.
It's on the bottom, it should be on the bottom of your zone sheets.
Okay. All right. Tackle applied to all zones, four bucks.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay. 75 a gallon.
That's for all of us.
Uh, TJ Campbell's $3.
Well, we'll use their tack and asphalt from...
Well, no, Mike. The reason I pointed that out is the couple of cents difference. You've gotta use tack oil if you're doing the overlay, which in all likelihood this is gonna be. You're gonna be less here when you add in the tack oil cost than you would be there with their couple cents difference on the asphalt.
Uh, Atlas, Atlas tack oil charged $4 a gallon.
And so that's $4 a gallon.
And so they're a little cheaper on the asphalt, but they're a little higher on the tack oil, which is gonna put it probably close to a wash.
Well, we use so little tack oil on our roads, cause they're, they're bare dirt, basically. And when we overlay something that has, uh, old asphalt on it, we grind it all up and we don't use tack oil. We use that Gorilla Glue. You know, that'll work. Is that cheaper?
No, absolutely not.
It's just more effective.
It's more effective.
This is free to on the T, or Haskell Lemon.
Same with District two. Uh, one. Or District...
No, you're two.
No, not yet.
Well, I'm still thinking that overall, I'm gonna get, uh, Atlas, it's gonna be just a tad cheaper for me, not much. But like I say, tack oil is really not an issue.
So I'll make a motion that District three and one is going with Haskell Lemon. District two's going with Atlas.
Uh, with Atlas. I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without exception. All right.
I need those bid packets, please.
Okay. Consider request from Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality to adopt a stormwater management plan for urbanized areas in Logan County. County's authority and jurisdiction to regulate such urbanized areas. And so...
Mr. Lowell came today to help us.
We appreciate you coming and chatting with us about this, Lowell.
Blew this through this bureaucratic mess.
Well, and I do not have the benefit of having talked to anybody that has talked to you from Department of Environmental Quality, so you'll have to fill in blanks as far as what they told you. But I did look to see what I find in governing law. Usually we operate on the premise always, when counties ask to do something, where's the statutory authority that the county has to do it? It's not because counties, every attorney general's opinion that I've seen almost will have a statement in it. Now, counties don't have any inherent power. They're creatures of the legislature in terms of the power they have. They only have the power granted to them by statute. So, for instance, floodplain management regulations, we have a whole section of law that says counties can do this. And that's what we operate under, and that gives us the guidelines. That's the authority to do what we do. If we wanted to, a few years ago, the legislature said, we will give counties the right, if they choose to do so, to adopt regulations for drilling operations of oil and gas companies near residences or near subdivisions, something like that, within each of the counties. Don't have to do it, but you've got the authority if you want to. So that's what I went looking for on stormwater management, is where's that authority? Could not find it. It's not there in the very law that they're pointing us to. Nothing talks about county commissioners having the authority to do anything. I looked at DEQ's rules, I don't see it there. I see where they say they can require municipalities to do things, but not counties. So my initial question was, where are we gonna get the authority to do what they want us to do? And usually, when we ask that kinda question, the agency or whoever is asking for us to do something, will come back with that authority. So far, they haven't. Now, maybe they haven't talked with their attorneys to help me out there, but usually I pose that on the other side and say, we have to have authority, so you tell us where in the statutes of the state of Oklahoma we have that, and then we'll proceed. So what I was able to find out, just from what they sent to us, and I think some of that Troy sent me from even 2016, they had a sample stormwater management plan. What they sent very clearly is all set up for a city or town, cause throughout it, it talks about the mayor signing the form, a town manager, adopting an ordinance, which cities and towns have the authority to do, but counties do not. We don't have legislative making power, so we don't adopt ordinances. And yet, that's what's in this proposed plan, is you will adopt an ordinance and you will enforce it. Again, where do we get that authority? So I understand it for cities and towns, and that's the template that they send for cities and towns. I don't understand it for counties that don't have that kinda power. You looked at, and Troy and I have talked, and she's told them, we don't have zoning power. That's true. You know, you've got four pieces of zoning legislation for counties. Most of them distinguished by the size of the county. One of them, you team up with a city and create a metropolitan area planning commission, and you can do zoning through that, but you're teamed up with a city. I think Logan County had that in the 70s, probably, with the government.
Eighties.
Yeah, 80s. So you've got that, but when you get down to a county the size of Logan County, as well as a county the size of Paint County, where I have my other side of this, neither of those counties have any land use regulations. If they wanted to even get there, the furthest they could probably get is adopting a plan, which they would do by a resolution, but then the resolution has to be approved by a majority of the voters. So would that ever happen? You know, so you're not gonna get there on land use control, land use regulation. But yet, if you could, probably within that, you may be able to impose stormwater management restrictions. But what they're looking at, I've looked at kinda the chain of law behind this. This starts out with federal law. As you can imagine, that's where the push comes from. The Federal Clean Water Act is what's behind this. So that's the federal piece of legislation. Then you have the agency in charge of enforcing that, the Environmental Protection Agency. So they have EPA, which has adopted regulations called the Phase Two Stormwater, Phase Two Regulations. That's basically Phase Two is cities or districts under 100,000 in population. So they've adopted these regulations, and then of course you have Oklahoma, which says, we want our share of federal dollars to help us, and besides that, federal authority has some control over what we do. So Oklahoma adopted the Oklahoma Polluted Discharge Elimination System Act. That's the law that's over this whole thing. And in that law, which is where I specifically looked for county authority and found none. But in that law, they of course, they have the rulemaking authority to what I call the equivalent of EPA and Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality. That's who basically enforces and administers EPA regulations, and also the federal law under the state law that gives them that authority. So you have the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, and then their rules, and they've adopted a whole set of rules pertaining to this particular law. In 2015, they adopted what's called the General Permit for Phase Two Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems. They remit that MS4. And those, that permit is a general permit that apparently lasts for five years, and then you apply individually to get a permit to carry out what that permit requires you to do. That's what the stormwater management plan, it's all tied to this general permit. The current one is what they would be operating under, and what they're asking you to do is apply for a permit. They're not saying, as I see it, you have to adopt these regulations. What they're saying is, we think you need to apply for a permit. So what this permit rule says is, the permit itself, general permit, requires that counties that lie within the urbanized area, and that's something determined by the latest U.S. Bureau of Census designation, or if they're otherwise designated by Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, as being required to obtain coverage under the state's Phase Two Stormwater Program, then here's the things they must do. One, submit a notice of intent to apply for coverage under the general permit. And two, submit a stormwater management program document that specifies for each of six minimum control measures, what activities will be performed, and they call those best management practices, along with schedules and measurable goals for each best management practice to reduce pollutants and stormwater to the maximum extent practical to protect water quality. That's all quoting from their stuff. So what they're saying is, we want you to apply for a permit to regulate discharge, stormwater discharge in the urbanized area. I don't know where that is. Troy had said there's a couple of areas in Logan County.
They've given us a map. They've given us a map.
Where that is. Okay. So they're saying, exercise jurisdiction over those areas, apply for a permit, and submit a stormwater management plan for those areas.
And they were here and presented that to us, and they were basically told, no, we're not gonna do that. The county at that time was threatened with a $10,000 day fine for noncompliance. Uh, the, and the meeting abruptly ended.
At that point. Yeah. And I can understand why.
And now things have kinda gone full circle again, and I think different players have changed, now different faces are there, and people are trying, I think there are more people who are trying to find out ways to work with us instead of threatening fines and fees and things like that, cause that's not gonna get them where they, any of us where we wanna go.
Exactly. Yeah. And that's, so I think that's how they're trying to get there, is saying, you need to apply for a permit, and then as a condition of the permit, you have the stormwater management regulation. There's not something in the legislation that says counties have the authority to adopt stormwater management programs.
So what happens if we don't apply for this permit?
Then, again, I would wanna see something that says you have to, or else.
See, that's kinda where I'm at, too. I mean, if we don't have the authority to enforce this, right? We don't have the statutory authority to do this, but why would we wanna take it on?
That's my question. And, you know, particularly when they give us that plan, and it talks about adopting an ordinance and enforcement, well, that's your power right there over people who might not comply, is you have an ordinance that finds it.
Be a state question. I mean, a county question.
Yeah.
It'd have to be a county question.
Well, that, and then legislation that even authorizes you to call a county question. Everything we do, the legislature has to say, you may do this.
That sounds like they need to go to legislature if they wanna go anywhere.
And say, yeah. Now, they did give, in the legislation, DEQ gets to determine who should be covered by this law. They, there is in that piece of legislation, one section that talks about that, and who is required to obtain a permit. It sounds like they get to determine that. They've not done that, as far as I can tell in their regulations, cause I've looked specifically, what do they say about counties and urbanized areas? I'm not finding it. I did find one that said they can require municipalities to do it. But that I understand, because, again, municipalities have broader powers, and they adopt ordinances and enforce ordinances. And so that makes sense. But the unincorporated areas of counties that have no authority to even impose land use regulations raises a much bigger question.
And that's the other option. They can incorporate.
Right.
And then, all right.
And that's the area. And they can control.
That'd be a good reason not to incorporate my book, but, okay.
Yeah. And this latest thing, you know, they're, they sent some papers, and Troy forwarded this on to me. They did send a permit that apparently Creek County had obtained, but that, again, makes it sound like they are operating a municipal separate storm sewer system. They're actually the operators. And when you look at their stormwater management plan, they speak in terms of the operators of this system. I don't know that we operate a system. We don't.
So, well, there are statutes that allow counties to operate a sewer system, which we don't want, we don't want any part of that.
Right, sure.
But in those cases, would that stormwater collection then apply to those?
It could apply, given that situation. And this one, obviously, the language behind some of the things in Creek County ties it to INCOG, and INCOG helped develop this plan, and they're using that plan, and everything's great with Department of Environmental Quality, that's why they issued the permit. But again, each county's gonna operate differently. Some of the counties may have land use regulations, because their voters have approved it, or they're tied in with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commissioners for some other reason they have the authority to do land use regulation. What DEQ pointed us to was a statute where the legislature had said, we will give counties the authority to impose fines for violation of certain things we did give them authority to do. And floodplain regulations is in there, of course zoning is in there for those that have zoning. They do have the word stormwater in there. And I think, well, that's interesting. They give authority in that statute to enforce violations, fines for violation of stormwater regulations, but where do they get the authority to adopt stormwater regulations? I can't find that. And, you know, so...
That's why we keep trying to tell them.
Yeah. I've gotta see that, and if I see that, I know you're gonna follow it. I mean, that's, there's not a question there. If it says, we must do it, then, okay, we will do it. I need that authority, so I always can't do it. And that's where I am.
I don't want them to.
Yeah. That's the position I've taken, and I think that's been communicated to them, and they're, I don't know what other counties, what...
They're looking for something to shed on us.
House Book 1942 next year?
Yeah.
If I may, so my understanding in the conversations with Mr. Lind at DEQ was basically, they're sitting there in Hampshire, called this week to make sure it was gonna be on today's agenda, to decide what avenue the county was gonna go down. If the authority challenge is gonna be issued, then legal counsel needs to issue that on behalf of the board, is my understanding from him, at which point it goes to their legal counsel, and the two legal authorities will hash out where we really fall in this. So I think, I think that's kinda what you're saying, is without knowing the authority, there's no sense of even considering a plan, but on behalf of the board, show us the authority. And that's kinda the information I've got from Mr. Lind as well.
So do we need to package that into some sort of a consideration or action from the board here?
Well, I have no intent of adopting anything that we're, we're not even, we can't even do.
Right. That's what I mean, to, to make it do it, but I'm not...
I think the board officially requests legal counsel to represent the board in determining the legalities or the authority to even proceed with any stormwater management proposals. And then that puts Lowell dealing with their legal counsel to hash this all out. Is that...
Yeah. Yeah, that would be...
Will you gentlemen like that motion?
To authorize Lowell?
Authorize Lowell.
I'll move on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Lowell, would you like to talk about that for a little bit?
No, I think, I think that's fine. What I might even do is just write an opinion to you and say what I said in this meeting today, that I cannot find the statutory authority to do what we're supposed to do here, and that on that basis, I recommend we... And that on that basis, I recommend we not take action on it until such time as that authority can be produced and we can see it and it's clear. And so.
I'm sure they're watching the meetings, so they probably know by now.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thanks to Chris.
I was thinking that very thing since I know they've went back and watched the previous meetings.
So I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Lowell, I'd like to thank you, though. Thank you all for your support for us. The help, I appreciate it.
Not a problem. I try to keep out of trouble.
You do a very good job.
Yes, you do.
Lowell, in spite of that. I'm sorry, I came in the middle of it. I don't know where I'm at my agenda, but I wanted to assess the insistence, as you already heard. And I wanted to quote you, so I didn't want to mislead you.
Lowell, David is with Sooner Fire Department, so you're working on one of our issues.
Oh, yes.
And I wanted to brief them on that issue.
Okay.
So that they were aware, just hooked in on the conversation.
Sure.
Yeah, I haven't drawn it to.
Yeah, so I was just going to run it out of citizens, as you already heard, that section. So I don't know, if you can run for that.
So I'll fix that right here, I think. Without objection, we'll move to item eighteen. Any citizen's desire to be heard?
I appreciate that, thank you. So as you mentioned, my name's David Franklin, of the Sooner Bonfire Department. I just want to make you guys aware of the developing situation that we have. You may recall, about a year ago, we wrecked one of our trucks. It was towed. We offered a bid for a replacement truck. The truck that was wrecked was a ninety-six fire engine, so we bid for a used fire engine to replace it. We've received it. It's a two thousand model Spartan. Seems like a nice truck. We seem to be happy with the truck itself and has all the stuff we wanted, and some upgrades and pump and everything. But we cannot get a title. The used car dealer is working us over on the title side of things. So it took a long time to get a title from them. And when we got the title, it was dated, 2016 City of Arlington. I was questioning that, so I ran it over to Troy's office. The dad picked it up. She looked at it, she feels like the title has been altered. And so we've referred to Lowell to get some input. He's reaching out to see if Arlington will find out what they can find out about it. We, it seems like the truck is fine, but we had no title, no tag, no insurance. It's a seventy-five thousand dollar paperweight right now. We've got sixty-five thousand in the truck. We've got another ten thousand, twelve thousand in county money and accessories and upgrades that we've put on the truck. Most of those will be able to take off if we have to. But there's, you know, a few thousand, you know, a couple thousand dollars worth of equipment that's permanently mounted for that make and model of truck that we'd only be able to use with another truck of the same make and model. So right now, we're pursuing some efforts between Troy and Lowell to secure the title. And I just, again, wanted you guys to be aware of the developing situation there. And I don't think I've misguided you at all. And that's kind of the brief version. And I'm sure Troy can figure out some more thoughts if she wants to, or if you want to say anything at that point.
We'll probably hold off, because this could lead to litigation. The facts are still under investigation, so.
Yeah, it's developing, yeah.
Then we will probably address in executive session how we want to handle that, so.
So we appreciate the comments as citizens desiring to be heard. Under that line, we can't enter into an iterative discussion with you. We can't do a back and forth, but we appreciate you bringing those, that issue to us.
Right. I wasn't expecting any action.
If we, if we need to do that, we can put that on the agenda and have a topic for back and forth discussion, open iterative discussion, that sort of stuff. And we'll.
Yeah, if Lowell does that.
We'll rely on, we'll rely on our counsel to fill us in on that. All right. Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, that was it. I appreciate you moving the turn around.
All right, no worries. Anything else under citizens desiring to be heard?
Thank you, Lowell.
Yeah, thank you, Lowell. All right, we're going to move on to item eight, consideration of possible action to appoint a member of the Logan County Free Fair Board to fill vacancy representing District One. Did you bring copies of those?
I just brought one set. I emailed out.
Yeah, so all I, I seen two applications and then one letter.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I know Willie Adams.
Casey, I don't know him.
That's the one I like.
Who's that?
Willie Adams. I mean, I like, I probably like Casey. Jerry Casey as well, I just don't know him.
It's the Fairgrounds guy.
Fairgrounds guy.
The Purdy guy.
Romeo.
That's from Romeo Dance.
Does he live in the district? I can just get ahold of him. And we didn't get a application from Mr. Avery?
Just that, that's all I have.
Let's cut down, I got them.
I'm making a motion to approve Willie Adams.
What's with it? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve resolution approving signatories to the inmate trust bank account.
Can we speak about this?
He signed it.
Okay.
But yes, if he'd love to, he'd love to.
Changing personnel, somebody's filling the void we had. All about the one that Damon's there with.
You think that's a little suspicious, Steve?
I'd wait for the background check.
That's the way to be trained.
I'll move with it. We have proof.
Still waiting for this application.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Make sure. Item ten, consideration of possible action to approve detention transportation claim for December twenty eighteen in the amount of three hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Ain't enough. Enough going to buy donuts for a sheriff's department. Don't wait three thousand dollars.
Is that a month?
A week.
Still waiting on the board to provide donuts.
The donut board. The donut trust board.
We need one of those.
Donut board.
Where do I find?
Item eleven, consideration of possible action.
Didn't take any action on that.
I didn't? We didn't approve the three hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-one cents?
And we were worried about donuts.
I made a motion.
I thought you did. All right, I'll second.
Can we find the county clerk, twenty-five dollars for talking?
Five dollars in a day in jail.
Please take me away.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
It's not time.
You didn't.
There are no items for eleven, twelve, or seventeen.
Oh, wow. Thank you, man. Item thirteen, consideration of possible action on approving the following temporary road crossing permits for Tetra Tech, twelve-inch water mine, cross and parallel East 660 Road, point two-five miles east. East 660 Road.
I'll make a motion number three.
Thank you very much. I didn't want to read all that in.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item fourteen, consideration of possible action on approving the following permanent road crossing permit for Oklahoma Natural Gas Company, two-inch gas line across Waterloo, six point five miles south of US seventy-seven, I-35.
It's District Two. Yep. Make the motion to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action on the consent agenda. Motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was just looking at that. I apologize. I'll. This is, this is a late place contact.
Tell them to confirm that I have the bid package.
And before we had our meeting this morning, I was chatting with some folks out here. I know some of our inmates, some of our trustees especially, are afflicted with like some OCD. You know, they like to draw, they like to stay busy. I didn't mean that as a bad thing, but they're kind of... I was wondering if there's any of them over there that you guys would know of and would recommend that might be able to put a likeness together of a floor plan for this building? Because we don't have an architectural drawing of this building. That would, that would keep a couple guys busy for a couple, three or four days. And would be a great help to the county, because we're trying to do upgrades to this building.
Yeah, we got a guy who was good.
Okay. Appreciate it. I know a guy that knows a guy that is. Vito. You know, need to see that guy, that thing. That thing, you know, the guy. That thing.
Yeah, we had a guy, says he can grab things and all that. I see.
Cool. Cool.
Do you have DEQ permit?
A DEQ permit? Is that what you said? Are you just trying to start trying? That's your friend over there, too.
Hey, the last thing you got to come to the meeting was very nice.
Yep.
Professional, who was, who you are. He still wants us to do what we can't do, but he was very nice. He was fair nice about it.
He was a nice guy.
That's what it sounds like.
That's why they heard him, I guess. Nice guy. Get things done.
Okay.
So, are you thinking of our visitors yet?
No. I do have a copy of the trust in nature. I opened the box and started looking through. And basically, all that was in the box was all the contract documents from the different bonds. The trust was established in sixty-eight. And it looks to me like there was about five or six actual bonding projects that had been done between then and the early eighties. I did let Lowell in to that a little bit, that I would be, why, why? He's going to get this forward of all this stuff when it shows up, so.
Okay, cool. Is this it?
Yeah.
I'll move, we approve and consented in the items.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to approve consent, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item sixteen, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for February twenty nineteen.
She apparently knew somebody well from there. She used to work in the city.
Wasn't they in Bethany, Chris?
Yeah.
What happened there?
Yeah. I don't know the full story, I just know the bits, so I'll hold on.
Board of prisoners?
Board as in room and board?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That makes more sense to me.
Listen, it throws me all the time.
Hey, I brought that up. Yeah.
Great mind.
Yeah.
What board? I never sat on that board before. Trying some sneaky stuff here with a different board. Makes sense, because back in my day, the Board of Education was about yay-long and about that wide.
Know it well.
Learned lots of good lessons through. Some of them I didn't learn so well.
Sometimes you got to do things a couple times to really understand.
Yeah.
That's what I'm supposed to do.
I hate that. Why, why, why are we continuing to do this? Don't worry, the rest are covered. Do we need to have a meeting? I'm just curious.
I think sometimes it, it's circumstance may cause, we don't know. I don't think that you have a, an overabundant. I think you just had a spell this time.
Been having too many spells. Been having too many spells.
But if we need to have a meeting, we can.
Well, I know that, but I hate to have meetings. Just do that.
Why not? Look evil.
I don't. I'm not digging it.
I probably have a good suspicion over what the problem is.
There we are.
While it's quiet, I will let you all know that the, the auditors have been on site getting prepped to start. They're going to do a three-year audit, so they're going to come through eighteen. We will be completely, for the moment, current. And they will be doing a financial audit, not an operational, so. They've given, downloaded information. They're getting all their prep. Letters of Engagement should be arriving shortly.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item sixteen is approved unanimously. Nothing for item seventeen, item eighteen, one more time around. Any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Comments? Sorry, got you there, Mike. Sorry, Mike. Item nineteen, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners. Mike?
I'd just like to point out, Chris, that was, that's a great job. He ought to get the business of the year.
I'll second that.
He already got sportcaster of the year. What more does he want?
Yeah. He spends a lot of time away from his family. I think he does a great job.
He does.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm not trying to suck after that. I'm just pointing it out.
Money must stop some.
Yeah.
Come on, we're not going to be dead.
Comments announced by the board.
Board as group, not roving board or stick.
Yeah.
Prisoner board. That's all I got, Morgan.
What a creep.
I'm not, I got some other stuff I'd like to say, but you know, it's just about echo and how they're supporting keeping the money with ODOTs instead of giving it to the county commissioner. You think our own association is trying to help us out?
Yeah.
Associations normally don't help out the people that join them. They're normally in it for their own self, for the association's benefit.
Then I could point out how you spank a child, go to jail, but up northeast and kill them and throw them out. I won't go there. Better move on. Better move on before we get on a roll here.
Item twenty. Yeah, make a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.